Two thousand nineteen, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Nelson. Adam Secretary, would you take the roll, please?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present except for Commissioner McCann.
Thank you. And I have the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have any comments?
I'll move to approve.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor? We have new equipment, so...
Okay, gotta push harder.
Alright. It's unanimous. Next, we have public comments. Anyone requesting to address the commission on any item other than what's on the agenda should fill out a speaker's form and present it to the secretary, and we'll hear them at this time. Hearing no other comments, then I will move to consent calendar. We have nothing on the consent calendar, so we'll move to the public hearing. And the first item on the agenda, number two, coastal development permit, CDP one eight zero zero one five, to construct a new four thousand eight hundred and eighty-one square foot two-story, single-family dwelling and attached seven hundred and eleven square foot two-car garage within the coastal high-density residential CRHD zone of the Dana Point specific plan located at three four three one two Shore Lantern. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you Chairman. John Champa has our staff report tonight.
Good evening Chair, Donor, Planning Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner for the Baumann residence. It's a request for a conditional use permit for a new home. The project's located within the Lantern Bay Estates community within the city of Dana Point. It is located within the Dana Point specific plan within the coastal residential high-density, or coastal high-density residential zone within the specific plan. And in nineteen eighty, an area plan was approved that identified specific development standards for this particular community, which vary per street and in some cases per lot. This is the last Romanian lot within the community that has not been developed. As you can see here, these are the existing conditions of the generally flat lot, buildable pad area here. The project's scope is to construct a four hundred, I'm sorry, four thousand eight hundred and eighty-one square foot two-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage that would be approximately seven hundred and eleven square feet. The architecture would be Spanish, which is in fitting with the architectural style within the neighborhood and would also include landscape and hardscape improvements. The application has been approved by the Lantern Bay Estates Homeowners Association. Project is in conformance with all the necessary development standards associated with the area plan, as you can see here in regards to the front living area, garage, side yard setbacks, height, and required parking spaces. This is the site plan for the structure. As you can see here, it complies with the identified setbacks mentioned within the area plan, as well as the top of slope. One item to mention is that in the final addition, there was a fireplace that was misplaced within, or beyond, the top of slope setback. I've discussed this with the applicant, and the plans actually are to locate no structures beyond the top of slope. So staff is prepared to provide a conditional approval if necessary to ensure that that is addressed in the final, if it is approved. This is the general floor plan for the first floor. As you can see here, we've got the entry-level garages, downstairs bedroom, great room, living area, open-style concept, as well as the office. And then the upstairs includes a deck over the garage, the bedrooms, and a master suite. These are the elevations, as you can see, illustrating the Spanish architectural style of the structure. And as you can see at the rear of the structure, is identifying the top of slope there in the green line. This is just the other elevations, the rear elevation and the southwest elevation, still articulating the compliance with the top of slope setback. Project is requiring a coastal development permit due to its location within the coastal zone. The project does not have any impact to any environmentally sensitive habitat area or public access and is not within the appealable jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. So it is in conformance with the requirements of the Coastal Act. Project does comply with all the necessary findings, given that it does comply with the development standards of the Dana Point specific plan and area plan noted local coastal program, and complies with all the necessary conditions of approval for the coastal development permit. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff, is available for any questions?
Questions for staff? Mr. Nelson?
Good evening, Chair. I have a couple of questions for you here. Can you... Sorry. Can you help me understand how, or who determines top of slope? Is it the city? Is it the HOA? And then if it's the city, what is our process for making that determination?
So the city, the applicant's design professional prepared a topography, topography plan to identify the top of slope. Staff went out, reviewed the site. The site was staked to identify that top of slope location to essentially confirm that what was illustrated on the plans is accurate to what's on-site. So it was the applicant that identified that location. However, staff did go to verify that, and that is the typical process with any top of slope or top of bluff determination provided by the applicant's design professional.
Okay. Go to the, a couple of questions on the plans here. So we have on, let me see here, on the landscape plan, the notes, there's the apparent top of slope, and then there's a new graded top of slope. How do those two relate to what top of slope is and where the setback line is?
So the top of slope, the structure setback line is, what's identified here is the apparent top of slope by the applicant. The, this landscape plan sheet, L1, is illustrating one of the items that I discussed when the site plan was up in that this had extended beyond what was actually required per our code. So we discussed this with the applicant, and they actually noted that it will be in line with the apparent top of slope, which is the existing conditions at the site now.
Okay, so if I look at the patio detail section, the number one section at the top of that sheet, are they pushing everything back to where it says ATS?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't know if that's important or not, because the line moves depending on what sheet you're on. And the next question I have is relative to the front of the house. So we have a five-foot setback on the garage, which appears to be permitted. But then you have that deck above that is within the twenty-foot setback?
Yes. So within the area plan, there is no, there is no mention of decks or patio covers within the setback. And in the Dana Point specific plan, it only refers to architectural projections and structures. And it has, and so staff looked at that, as well as the context with the neighborhood, and did identify that there are a number of decks and covered areas within that twenty-foot front yard setback area, and found that it was consistent with the Dana Point specific plan, as well as the, the community.
I actually didn't find that, but when I looked at the entire neighborhood, I didn't see anything that was pushed out to the face, almost the face of the garage. But when I, and when I look at our setback standards and our encroachment provisions, decks and balconies are only allowed to project a certain way into the front yard setback. And if you look at the language on the overlay, it notes that it's a garage, that the garage is allowed. So what would prevent anybody from then putting something else on top of that garage, if it's not specific?
Correct. So within the Dana Point specific, specific plan, it identifies encroachments that can occur within the front yard setback, and decks and patio covers is one of those. Here, in this slide, you can see a number of decks and improvements that are located above the garage and within that, what would be that twenty-foot front yard setback. If you look in the upper right corner, these are actually covered patio covers, similar in design. However, these are probably a bit more enclosed than what's being proposed on that. So that's on Starboard Lantern Drive.
Okay, I understand that, but I guess my question is, if that, if you can add, if the idea is that you could do pretty much anything within the required setback, then why is there a required setback in the first place?
Well, I don't think that this is anything. I think that this is, decks, decks over this area is somewhat silent in Dana Point specific plan and in the area plan. And however, the covered patio covers does identify that there isn't allowed encroachment to that at the five feet. So based on that, staff's, and staff looking at the community, staff felt like this was inappropriate and fitting with the context of the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay, that was that. And then the other question I have is when you look at, and the, I'm not sure who can answer this question, but if you pull the section that you included in the staff report, which is this specific plan, again, I think it's part of the track map, and it references the requirements for setbacks. So it'd be the area plan that you provided. As a reference, the Orange County grading code and the grading setback requirements, what are, do we have a standard structural setback requirement in our Dana Point grading manual?
There is one. However, it does allow for deviations, given the structural conditions, as well as the geotechnical issues. Staff, myself, including Public Works, reviewed this and is found to be in conformance with that.
So what are the, just from my, so I understand, what are the things that allow for those encroachments? Or whatever you look at that allows for a change of the structural setback?
So...
What do they have to do?
Matt, feel free to jump in as well, but it's essentially structure design, stability. So essentially, the structure can be built up to the edge of the slope, and it's shown that it's stable, given the structural designs, as well as the geotechnical report. That's found to be, and the building official is in agreeance with those, then the structural element can project up to the top of slope.
Okay. That's it. That's all I had.
Jonathan, on the conditions, on the, excuse me, the resolution process, on, on page four, it says, "Prior to the issuance of a grading permit, item thirteen, as part of the grading permit, a topographical and boundary survey will be required to be submitted for review and approval." The topical, the topographic and boundary survey shall be prepared by a licensed California surveyor. The boundary survey will be required for setback certification, and record of survey shall be submitted to the county of Orange as needed." So that is going to take place by a third party? Is that the, does the city hire them, or does the people submitting hire them?
That's, the applicant does submit that document. However, that is reviewed by the county of Orange for review and accuracy. And so that is a thorough review process that the county does conduct. And it's, because it's done by a licensed land surveyor, with, they have the, you know, specific professional responsibilities associated with their, with what they're licensed with in terms of accuracy and responsibility to that.
Also, on the next page, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide an onsite, onsite staking of the property corners, the limits of grading and/or building corners, the elevation, blue top staking of grade, graded pad elevations, and the staking of pre-graded top of slope as required for setback verification." So that is going to take place also?
That's correct. It's typically standard procedures for any kind of bluff or slope-type project. So this is more or less a standard condition of approval for this type of condition.
And the next page, on page six, number twenty-seven, and I'll skip through the line, "The report should include conclusions and recommendations regarding applicable setbacks, foundation recommendations, erosion control, and any other relevant geotechnical aspects of the site." And that also takes place before there's an issuance of a building permit?
Yes.
And then, "Prior to final approval of all permits," number thirty-two on page seven, "A written approval by the geotechnical engineer of record approving the grading as being in conformance with the approved grading plan from a geotechnical standpoint." And then thirty-three, "A written approval by the civil engineer of record approving the grading as being in conformance with the approved plans, which specifically approves construction for all engineered drainage devices and retaining walls." So that has to take place also before any final permits are given.
Before, before the permit, before the... Yeah, that's prior to certificate of occupancy. So that's a report, essentially, verifying all the necessary items that were required to take place during the construction and at the final job design has been completed.
Are there any other comments from the commission for, for John? Alright, now I will open the public hearing on item number two, and I have speakers here. First, I'll call, before I call our first speaker, let me reiterate that any person wishing to address the commission will have three minutes to make the presentation on the public comments section of the agenda, and we will have fifteen overall minutes for this presentation. And so the first speaker we have is April O'Connor.
We are asking you to vote no and deny the project because, one, the applicant has designed a house without proving that the, where the actual historical top of slope is located. Two, the Orange County grading code requires a five-foot rear yard setback for a slope, and this project doesn't have it. Three, they have fabricated their own top of slope by using terms like apparent or assumed. And by, and four, by lowering their pad, the applicant will move the actual top of slope to a post-grade top of slope line. Without a land survey from a licensed land surveyor, the applicant wants you to approve a project that is probably ninety-six feet in length, although tonight they've changed it, so I'm not sure, but the pad is only about ninety feet in length. We don't know what they're proposing, because the patio dimensions are not on the plan. Fireplace keeps jumping around. They're moving it. They're taking it out. We don't know. Let's look at that track map, building line plan that is recorded on the grant deed of the subject property. It shows a building plant, a building pad. It shows there's a rear yard setback. See the G notation that's circled? It says, quote, "Refer to the Orange County grading code for grading setback requirements. However, in no event shall any structure be located beyond the top of slope," unquote. The 2017 edition of the Orange County grading code, subarticle ten, requires a five-foot rear yard setback for a cut-and-fill slope. And hopefully, I wasn't satisfied with what staff said, that they're not requiring it for this project. The track map shows there is a side-by-side line at the top of slope and the grantor-installed fence, which is still located in the original position on the subject property. Per the track map, the actual top of slope line does not change. It is an historic reference point that does not move. A real land surveyor would have used monuments and reference points to establish an actual historic top of slope. Go to, yeah, keep going. That's the code. Keep going, please. That's where it says it needs five feet. Keep going, please. Okay. G5. If you look at their civil engineer's post, G5 survey, he's a post-1982 license, and he is unauthorized to sign off on land surveys. That's probably why he does not show any front-to-back dimensions on G5. Instead, their civil engineer went out, I need to continue, I mean, I'm... Well, they started it late to get the thing on the overhead, so... And instead, their civil engineer went out to the lot and did a visual examination and placed stakes in arbitrary positions, and then uses the term apparent or assumed top of slope. The stakes are not drawn on any of their plans. Once they are removed, then the applicant can say the top of slope is anywhere he wants it to be. And that's why he wants to regrade the ninety-foot lot and make it bigger. And then, then he wants to do the land survey in order to create a brand-new, post-grade top of slope to fit his huge project. Don't let him do it.
I'm sorry, Ms. O'Connor, your three minutes are up. Can you please wrap it up?
Yes. Vote no, because the project doesn't have a valid land survey. Vote no, because the project does not comply with the Orange County grading code and does not have a five-foot setback. And vote no to stop the applicant from creating his own brand-new top of slope. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Kevin O'Connor.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Connor. I live in Dana Point, adjacent to the lot in question. The applicant lot is a challenge to design for. Not only do the lots in Lantern Bay tend to be very narrow, but the subject lot is the shortest on the street. I can understand why they want to maximize the use of the lot, but they should not do so at the expense of the city and county rules and regulations meant to protect their neighbors as well as the applicant. The lack of a proper land survey and the desire to grab as much buildable land as possible has led to inconsistencies in the submitted plan. If you look at the first slide here, I had, it shows Toll Engineering came out and surveyed where the apparent top of, the apparent top of slope stakes were placed. If you look on their survey, they don't call out the stakes. They talk about an apparent top of slope, but they never refer to the stakes that they have placed. Here you can see the red line is a straight line from stake to stake, but the middle stake is set in farther, so it's more of a curve and not a straight line, which means the worst condition's at the center of the lot, and they chose to take the most favorable condition at the top of the lot. Next door, I have, the narrow part of my lot's five feet. If you go to the other side of my lot, I've got seven feet, but I was limited by that worst condition. You know the next slide? And then this shows their apparent top of slope is a nice straight line across the back of their house. There's no curve to it, and they take that very favorable condition at the top, and they apply it to the whole lot. I also got the notes there. They kept changing things a lot, so the patio's out and the things that keep jumping around with the fireplace. So we're going to go over and skip that part. Next slide. And the patio, depending what sheet you're looking on, the drawings, sometimes the patio's outside the top of slope. It's inside the top of slope. There was no consistency in the drawings, which makes me question. I'm an architect. When I start seeing different things on different sheets, I really question how closely all the information was coordinated on those drawings. Next slide, please. So this shows a section through for the civil engineer. Where that arrow is showing is that's where that massive footing would be for those. There's two columns at the front of the lot that are going to hold up the entire second floor. They're not shown on here. They'd be massive. They'd go down. They have to go beyond that dash line there to get into good soil to hold them up. So that should have been on there. That should have been noted, and they have to keep it. And they're going to have to make sure their footing goes backwards behind the top of slope. It's not, because normally when you dig a footing, you dig all around the footing. It would be a massive intrusion to the slope. Next slide, please. Here's again where that top, the apparent top of slope line is there. There's no fireplace. Next slide. And then they left off the line. The fireplace jumped in there. Next. So basically, what they were talking about in the neighborhood, some of those houses that extend out, those are bootlegged. You can't necessarily, if you want to start approving bootleg stuff in that neighborhood, I know a lot of people that would love to build on that slope and do more bootleg things themselves. So we need to hold to the top of slope. They need to go get a real land survey, which will show that the top of slope is not the apparent top of slope, that it's farther back. In closing, I'd like to ask you to not approve this project until it complies with the city and the county codes. Thank you.
Next, we have Lauren O'Connor. This is the time for public comments on this project. So there's not going to be, there's not going to be a second opportunity, so this is it. Do we have any other speakers? That's it? Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing, and I'll open it up to discussion by the commissioners. Mr. Opal?
Is it okay to have a couple more staff questions as part of this?
Absolutely.
John, a couple of things that came up. We're talking about compliance with the code in county versus city. So this was approved as an area plan in the 1980s by the county of Orange and under some of their jurisdictions, and it has references to their grading plans. How has that changed now that the city has been incorporated and this is being submitted to the city and not the county?
So for zoning and development standards purposes, the city looks to the area plan and the Dana Point specific plan, and in cases, the Dana Point specific plan refers to the county code for zoning-related issues. As far as the grading and the grading review and the grading references here are related to the, let's see, the Orange County grading code. Given that the city is now incorporated, the city's grading code does, is what applies here, and that's across the board for all of the projects within the Dana Point specific plan, and has been the practice of Public Works in reviewing applications. However, in discussions with Public Works, the two, the county grading code versus the city grading code related to this issue are identical.
Alright, thank you. This was a very complicated one to look at with respect to where the top of the slope is, and it looks like staff has gone out and really looked at it, and there are some issues within the plans, and as you said, would be amenable to conditioning it based on putting it where it accurately should be. So other than that one issue, I really didn't see anything else wrong with this at all, and I would be supportive of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any comments? You just pushed the button.
I did.
The other one. That one, yeah, push it in. There you go.
Okay. Thank you. This was a, this was a very interesting plan that we had, and, but if you could take some of the fluff away, or the, uh, the point where people were getting, you know, somewhat a little over the top, uh, when I, I know when I sat down and really looked at all of the paperwork and the plans, and did my best to, to look at what the concerns were from each side, every side, uh, I found that this is just, it's one of those wonderful new homes that are gonna go up in this, the last home that's gonna go up in this, this, uh, um, uh, area, and, uh, it fits suitably with what's there now, and I, 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 I will support it.
Yeah, I've got one follow-up question, John. So, I went and looked at our projection code when I was looking at these plans. So if you could do me a favor, I don't know if you've got the code there, uh, or maybe the city attorney can help out, but section nine point oh-five dash oh-eight oh has our maximum projection allowances, and it does exclude certain parts of town, but not this area, at least the way I read it. And if you go to the front setback, what is permitted to encroach into that twenty-foot is a balcony, not a deck. And that balcony can project two feet, six inches. The deck is not allowed at all, based on this, and this, I'm misunderstanding this. Um, you know, I understand there's issues with this, where this property line is, or where the top of slope is, and then there's the HOA, and, and I think trying to pull all that stuff aside, this is the concerning issue for me, is that we actually have something that doesn't exist in the neighborhood. There are balconies that may project into that two- or three-foot allowed area, but this is a deck that's not permitted. And I think if we don't address that, and we get lost up in this other issue with whether or not the top of slope is nailed perfectly, um, we may miss a, a bigger issue here. So if you could get, help me understand how this would be permitted under our own code, that would be super helpful.
So, the code section that you're referring to is the Dana Point zoning code. And the Dana Point, um, in the area plan, uh, basically was derived from the Dana Point specific plan, which was derived from the, the county code. So this particular issue defers back to the county code, and in that, in that particular area, the county code has its own projection section, and it allows, um, decks and other improvements to project five feet into the required setbacks, so that would be fifteen feet in this particular case. However, with the unique circumstances in, uh, of the area plan, not necessarily articulating improvements on the top floor, we kinda deferred back to that, and then we also looked at a couple of the other structures that had similar-type improvements, as well as looking at what the HOA had reviewed and approved and felt like it was compatible with the neighborhood. Given here, that does show that the deck itself does project beyond that point, uh, close to the front, uh, setback area there, so that would be the one element where there is a discrepancy that you're referring to. But we are, we are looking at and referring to the, the county code for this particular, uh, element. So, this is one instance where there is a inconsistency between those two codes.
The county allows for deck projections fifteen feet?
Uh, five feet. And so, that patio covers and decks, and so that's where we looked at, okay, what's going on with the neighborhood here because of the, uh, the lack of clarity on what was being, uh, proposed with the actual deck element itself? So, um, it is a situation where, um, wasn't exactly clear-cut, and that's why we looked to the HOA and, um, some of the other improvements that had transpired in the community, so, um, that, that's essentially our justification for how we reviewed that improvement.
Okay. And did we, do we have that information in our packet, the Dana Point, or the county section that allows this?
I can look to pull that, pull that section up.
Okay. Um, that's my only comment. Or question?
The, uh, the issue, uh, one of the issues that, uh, we looked at was the, the city-county, uh, would have, uh, certain requirements, but the HOAs have, uh, other requirements that, uh, can be more stringent, but not less. So, in this case, uh, the HOA has made some decision to support this project, uh, in, in spite of some of the concerns, and the city then has the responsibility to make sure that the top of slope has been, um, measured properly by a certified, uh, topographical, uh, a topographic engineer that's licensed to make sure that that, uh, i- is in place before any, uh, grading or anything can take place. Is that true?
That's, that's correct.
So, uh, the, the other thing is the, um, property to the, directly to the north, uh, extends significantly beyond what has been defined as the top of slope. So, uh, that's, uh, that's another, uh, issue that, uh, we, that I, that I looked at and said, if we're, if we're holding this applicant to a different standard than, than exists in the neighborhood, then the HOA should be the, the entity that protects the CCNRs. The city is not involved in, in defining that for, for the HOA. So, um, so with that, uh, if there are any other questions or discussions, then I think we should proceed to, uh, to make a motion.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve coastal development permit, CDP eighteen dash zero-zero-one-five, to construct a new four thousand eight hundred eighty-one square foot, two-story, single-family dwelling, and attach seven hundred and eleven square foot, two-car garage within the coastal high-density residential CRHD zone of the Dana Point specific plan, located at thirty-four-three-one-two Shore Lantern, with the condition with, of the amended toe of slope and no structure going beyond it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote. We have th- three yeses and one no. So, the project is passed. Congratulations to the foulments. The next project, we have item number three. Site development permit, SDP one-nine-zero-zero-one-six, to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling on a hillside-conditioned lot. Thank you. Uh, conditioned lot and the construction of a multi, of a multiple retaining walls exceeding thirty inches in height. We have a staff report?
Thank you. Dani Giometti has the staff report tonight.
Bear with me for one moment. Good evening, Chair Donner, fellow commissioners. The project before you this evening is a proposal to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling on hillside-conditioned lot, and also the construction of multiple retaining walls which exceed thirty inches in height. So the site is a three thousand five hundred and twenty-eight square foot lot. It's located southwest of the intersection of Silva Road and Golden Lantern. It's also zoned as residential multifamily fourteen, RMF fourteen, and it's surrounded by a mixture of multiple family, uh, single-family, duplex development, all ranging from, anywhere from one to four stories in height. So, as you can see from this image on the right, uh, the existing conditions, uh, the lot contains a pretty significant slope. The existing improvements is, uh, include a two-story, five hundred and sixty square foot home. Uh, there's some site walls, some hardscaping, and some landscaping on the site. Uh, as you can see from this image, there's currently no off-street parking, uh, on-site. So, uh, the project proposes the demolition of the existing structure, uh, you saw in that last picture, along with the hardscaping and landscaping that's, that's out there, and, uh, propose, the proposal's to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling. Um, as you can see on the site plan, it's the one highlighted in yellow, and, uh, multiple retaining walls will also be proposed on the site. Uh, the project also proposes the construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit, which is identified in green on the site plan. And, uh, it's important to note that, uh, that the accessory dwelling unit is, uh, it does not require discretionary approval, it's ministerial action. So since the subject's lot width and depth are less than the RMF fourteen zoning district's minimum standard, the lot can be developed with reduced setbacks and driveway lengths. As you can see from the zoomed-in image on the right-hand side up here, uh, the project proposes the reduction, a reduction in the, uh, garage setback to nine feet, and the ADU, uh, proposed above, the two-car garage has also been reduced down to seventeen feet from the front property line. Uh, all other setbacks conform to the standard RMF development standards. So these are the, uh, floor plans of the single-family home. Um, as you can see on the lower floor there, uh, that would be the common living area and kitchen areas, uh, there'll be two bathrooms, uh, two bathrooms and two bedrooms as well on the lower floor. On the upper floor, uh, it's gonna have the master bedroom with an in-suite bathroom and then attached laundry facilities. Uh, as you can see on that patio level on the left, uh, the space below the home is, uh, is open, and structural support is derived from the retaining walls and columns that create this patio cover area, uh, that's to be utilized as an outdoor living area only. So this is the development standard table. Um, as you can see on the right-hand side, we went through all the development standards and, uh, everything, all the development standards are compliant, um, including, uh, yard setbacks, lot coverage, height limit, um, and, uh, parking. So, uh, a site development permit is going to be required for the, uh, to utilize the lot as a hillside condition, or to utilize the hillside condition ordinance on this particular lot. Uh, and also, a minor site development permit has been requested to increase the retaining wall heights on-site, um, from thirty inches, um, to, uh, anywhere from, I believe, twenty-four to sixty inches. So first off, the, uh, hillside condition, uh, is a lot with a topographic slope condition of twenty percent or greater slope. The zoning code states that residential structures that are proposed on a hillside condition, uh, can be up to three stories and can also have additional height. Um, this particular lot came in at thirty-four percent slope, uh, as measured from the lowest point on the front lot line, as you can see on the bottom right on the, uh, existing survey, uh, to the, uh, highest point along the rear property line, located in red again at the top left. So from that low point to the high point, the, um, average slope is, again, thirty-four percent. So although the applicant is not proposing three stories for the proposed dwelling, the design, uh, the design utilizes the increased height allowed for lots in a hillside condition. The proposed dwelling is designed with a flat roof and a maximum of twenty-nine feet, as measured from the structure's lowest point to the top of roof, and that's shown in green on this image, on this elevation. As you can see, the structure low point coming in at one ninety-four sixteen, and the top roof being at two twenty-three-ten, with a total of, of twenty-nine feet. So the proposed dwelling has been designed in compliance with all the provisions identified in the hillside condition ordinance, which includes the maximum FAR, setbacks at upper levels, height above the upper property line, and it also results in a reduction in grading. The lot was staked, and it was certified in accordance with the city's story pull-staking requirements. And again, even though the design is not three stories, it meets all the required provisions outlined in the hillside condition ordinance. This is the rendering that was provided by the applicant. Um, as you can see, it's a, it's a pretty modern architectural styling, incorporates a lot of flat roofs, uh, exterior walls with the sand-finished stucco, horizontal tiling, there's some exposed CMU at the garage level. Uh, the tempered glass guardrails, as you can see on the balconies and the decks, as well as the stairway which accesses the dwellings, uh, will be, um, uh, also give it a, give it a bit of a, uh, modern style. And, uh, the openings, uh, include vinyl windows and doors, uh, along with an aluminum roll-up garage door in brown. So as I said earlier, the project also proposes, uh, the construction of multiple terrace and structural retaining walls which exceed thirty inches in height and are also visible along Roble's Drive. Um, the image on the right here, uh, is a STEM retaining wall, uh, which runs along the perimeter of the single-family dwelling, as well as the accessory dwelling unit, and it's, uh, only a small, low portion, uh, of that wall will actually be visible from public view, and that'll be to the left of the, of the garage. A terrace retaining wall, or, there'll be multiple te- terrace retaining walls on the site, uh, and they range from twenty-four to thirty-six inches. Uh, those are the three that are shown in green, uh, on the front elevation, as well as on the, um, on this grading plan. Uh, the terrace retaining walls, uh, will also be required to be finished with materials that will be consistent with the modern architectural styling of the house, uh, and will also be screened with, uh, with landscaping, which will mature to visually screen the walls. Therefore, the proposed walls are also consist, consistent with the, uh, with the, with the house itself, as well as, uh, adjacent development sloping, of the sloping lots along Roble's Drive and throughout the rest of the city. So staff finds that the proposed project's consistent with the basis of approval for a site development permit, and based on the analysis, staff determines that the project's consistent with the policies and provisions of the city of Dana Point, uh, general plan, as well as the Dana Point zoning code, and the findings contained in the draft planning commission resolution, which support approval for the proposed entitlement requests, uh, can be made. Therefore, staff recommends approval of SDP nineteen zero-zero-one-six, subject to the conditions contained in the attached draft, uh, resolution. This concludes my presentation. Myself, as well as the applicant, are available to answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Mr. Opal?
I missed her tonight. Thank you very much, Dani. One quick question. On the ADU, does that impact parking at all?
The accessory dwelling unit does not impact parking. Um, under state law, they are, uh, they are not required to provide additional parking if they are within one mile of a transit stop, or if there is already existing parking on-site. Um, this particular property is proposing a two-car garage, which is required for the single-family dwelling in the back. The accessory dwelling unit, uh, will, uh, like I said, it does not require parking. Um, however, there is a, a, a nine-foot driveway that potentially could be utilized, uh, for part, additional parking.
Okay, that's my second question. The nine feet, because it looks like there's a sidewalk in front of there, just from the rendering that I'm looking at. So, for, what's the, the, the depth for a standard driveway?
The standard driveway is required to be twenty feet in length.
Twenty feet? So, if you park a car in the nine feet and it crosses a sidewalk, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that, that would not be acceptable, so they would need a, some sort of shorter car, or a smart car, or something.
Okay.
But like I said, uh, the, uh, accessory dwelling unit is not required to be parked.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Murphy?
Nothing.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I have no questions. Thank you.
I have no questions? So, at this point, I will, uh, open the, uh, public hearing, and do we have any, any speakers?
No, we do not.
I will close the public hearing, and, uh, we'll wait for the commissioner discussion. Start with you, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, this is a tough site. It's got, uh, some really aggressive, probably the wrong word, some very steep, uh, topography here. I think the applicant's done a really nice job designing something that, uh, utilizes what's available out there, and, um, you know, I would support this, and I, I actually would comment that the addition of the ADU is, I think it's a good thing, that, you know, the, the reality is, is the city, we need more affordable housing, uh, and the state's coming down pretty hard on all the cities that don't have that. Uh, my one concern is that because we don't have controls over parking, that it just complicates things. My one concern is that because we don't have controls over parking, that it just complicates things. What I would want to discuss with you all, if possible, is a condition that just ensures that that garage is not used for anything other than... Or it's used for at least parking. So, at all times, a minimum of two spaces are available in that garage to ensure that, you know, the impacted parking in areas where people don't use their garages for parking that we actually do in this case. And I think it's similar to what we've done in the past in this neighborhood. Other than that, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't approve this tonight.
Would you like to make that a motion with the condition?
Willing to listen to the rest of the commission before I do anything, but...
Other side.
I really... When I saw the plans to this, and I got very excited before I... When you even went out to look at what was available to see in terms of the polls and where everything was and would this impact parking? Would it impact those narrow roads? Having the three steps going up, I think, is how we should use all our hills. Is put our... Put our new homes in that direction, going up, up the hillsides, instead of massing them at the bottom and putting it three stories. So, I think this is a great project. It's... I think it will open other folks' eyes as to what can be done and in an efficient way and also done in an aesthetically pleasing way, and I'm all for it.
I concur with the other commissioners. It is a challenging lot, and they've done a lot to get a lot more than the 560 square feet that was there previously. Again, with Commissioner Nelson, I do have the concerns over the parking, and that was my question with respect to the ADU, because it is a tight area and it is the... An area that has a lot of duplexes and a lot of current occupants in the neighborhood. So, I also would support it with that condition for the garage.
I echo the comments of my fellow commissioners and also concerned about the parking. So, I will entertain a motion to approve this project with the condition.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve site development permit SDP-190016 to permit the construction of a single-family dwelling on a hillside-conditioned lot and the construction of multiple retaining walls exceeding thirty inches in height with an added condition that requires that at all times, two parking spaces are within the garage, whether they're used for parking or not, so they can never... Always would have to have room for two cars. And I'm sure staff could... You guys can get that drafted in a much more succinct way than I said it, I would hope. All right, thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, a second, please vote. It's unanimous, congratulations. Next item on the agenda is the Planning Commission Workshop on Local Coastal Plan Amendment, LCPA-190002 zoning text amendment, ZTA-190022019 Dana Point zoning code updates. Do you have a staff report?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Sean Nicholas, senior planner. This item is a follow-up workshop to our July 8th meeting. As the commissioner knows, this has been a new policy that has been set forth down from the city council to look at our zoning ordinance every year and continue to improve and make updates to make sure that our zoning ordinance is so reflective of state law and also reflective of the community. In years past, as the commission knows, we've done a very large, sweeping, minorist changes, I would say, the low-hanging fruit. This particular zoning ordinance this year only has actually two items. It's much more strategic in terms of the modifications we're making. And so, with that, the agenda for today is we're going to review briefly the topics that were discussed on July 8th of this year, as well on joint use of parking facilities, as well as potential new landscape requirements. Since July 8th, staff has put together some draft language, provided to you in your staff reports this evening. Staff recommends you take public comments and feedback and then ultimately bring it back to the planning commission for feedback to staff. So, regarding parking, jumping right into this, we've had a parking study that was recently completed that indicates ample parking stock is available in the community. It's just underutilized. And it was identified within that parking study that the off-site joint-use parking tool is underutilized. And it's a tool that can be utilized to more efficiently utilize our parking stock. And I have to say that to Ms. Reinders, who has provided me some of this stylistic improvements that you see as we go through. So, her touches are already being felt here in community development. Just gives you a sense of that three-hundred-foot current limitation is... Has been identified as being the key reason that it has not been utilized. As you can see, it's a very limited area in which the shared parking facilities could occur. For quite some time, as we discussed last time, the quarter-mile radius has been held as a quote-unquote "walkable" distance. And we discussed a number of things even regarding walkability of town center and for the various commercial districts in the community for that matter. And it's important to note that a quarter-mile equates to about five minutes of walking. So, when looking at the radius of what a quarter-mile contains, as you can see, that's a much larger area of potential joint use. And that represents a whole distance of five minutes. And overall, the overall town center, as we discussed last time, is just over half-mile, which would be about ten minutes of walking. But as you can see, there's a lot more potential area and potential use to share parking facilities to more efficiently use that space. So, based on the direction and comments that we received, both from the public and from planning commissioners at our July 8th meeting, staff has drafted some preliminary language. And based on all the various iterations and potential distances for the joint-use parking facility, staff did utilize the quarter-mile as being the preferred method. This is just the provision of the Dana Point zoning code, the parking requirements that have to do with joint use of parking facilities. As you can see, the big capital A that we're just adding in the minor site development permit, this isn't actually changing anything. It's just clarifying that it is a minor site development permit, because as you can see, it's already a decision that is before the Director of Community Development. And then extending on the capital B, extending that radius from three hundred feet to a quarter-mile as shown in those images. So, with that, on this issue, staff recommends taking any public comment that there would be, and then staff is looking for any discussion or further feedback regarding these businesses and the proposed changes.
We have some questions to staff?
Are we going to break this into two pieces and do landscape after this, or...?
Yes, that was staff's plan.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we're talking about a change from three hundred feet to a quarter-mile. What's that? Do you know how many feet that is? Like fourteen?
It's about a thousand feet more, approximately. If I remember off, I believe a quarter-mile is 1,320 linear feet.
Okay, so a double, basically?
Yeah.
Roughly, okay. Great, thanks.
Are there any questions? Then if we have no other questions, I will open up the public hearing on parking and shared parking. And the speakers... First speaker will be Joe Jagger. Okay, I will... I'll hold that off. Then, does anyone else want to speak on the parking? Okay, then I think we will move to the landscape issue unless there's an issue on... First off, we'll have a discussion. I'll close the public comments on the parking issue and open it up to the commission discussion.
Sure, Mr. Chair. You know, my comments are, I think this is a good step forward. I think the idea that, you know, we're ever going to solve a parking problem has to have some plan. And this is a good step forward in the interim, that if we've got willing participants that'll share their parking and then people that'll actually walk, then we should be taking advantage of that as a city and as a community. I think the idea that we have a walkable downtown can't be walkable if it's full of cars. So, if we have an opportunity to spread those cars out, even better. So, I'm in full support of the change relative to the parking requirements outlined in the staff report.
Commissioner Murphy?
I'm in full support.
Nothing further. I think it's a great step in the right direction, and I will entertain a motion to proceed.
I think staff's just looking for input. We don't actually need a formal action tonight.
All right, then you have your feedback.
Yes, that makes it very easy. Thank you very much.
Mr. Nicholas?
Not much change for me, so excellent, thank you. So, moving forward then to the landscape issue, just again, some background from July 8th. And is that, obviously, as we know, landscaping is a living, growing thing and does mature over a long period of time. Currently, the way the zoning ordinance is set up is that there is no analysis regarding the mature heights of trees, shrubs, or hedges. Our requirements are more focused on drought tolerance because those are what we get mandated from the state associated with water usage. So, it was directed or it was asked for staff to look at the opportunities to look at potential standards associated with landscaping and heights because we do have limitations and regulations regarding structures and how they're placed onsite and their height limits. So, other than hedges, which is regulated in the same way as our fences, there's no other height limitation standards. So, taking the discussion from last time, which was a discussion primarily regarding proactive versus reactive landscape... Landscape approach in terms of requirements. It was generally agreed upon by planning commission after discussion as well as public comments that that was the more favorable approach. So, based on that, staff has provided draft language along that proactive approach and how that could fit within our existing landscape requirements. And also additionally, it's important to note that the planning commission also wanted to get a copy of the Laguna Beach code in that process, and that was provided to you this evening as attachment one. So, in terms of the draft language for the code, I think the key component here is this first initial language that has to do with the mature heights of trees and shrubs and our hedges shall be labeled on any... On a standalone table on any landscape plans that come forward. And that any landscaping that shall be put on those plans at mature height shall not exceed the maximum height within the zoning district in which it is located. Now, it's important to note that at our previous public workshop, we discussed the option of a citywide plant list versus some other method. And staff has taken a lot of time to evaluate the approach and with a goal towards still allowing individual property owners to design what they may want on their home and that how this may impact. And also, not wanting a homogenous design, still allowing for flexibility in different types of species to be planted throughout the community. Taking this approach, kind of a more broader approach, instead of dictating types of landscaping, staff felt was a better approach to allow for a more eclectic and in terms of also styles, certain types of landscape materials go with some types of architectural styles. And so, it allows for the individual property owner and applicant to decide what their plant palette was, as long as they clearly show at that mature... At that mature level, what it will be and that the heights of those species will not exceed the maximum height of the zoning district. Now, a key component, and this is something that was provided to you, and I know it's really small, but it's going to be shortened up on the next slide. But as a component of this is applicability, and we talked a bit about this last time, in terms of developing triggers and potential exceptions in terms of how this should apply. And so, in terms of applicability, staff has developed three situations in which staff has identified the applicability. New construction on a vacant lot, fifty percent or more of the existing interior and exterior walls are demolished, or a landscape permit is required pursuant to the subsection that this is located. Because as in the attachment to your staff report, I've provided to you the whole... The whole landscape title 9.55, chapter 9.55 of our zoning ordinance, which talks about all the other areas and requirements having to do with square footage of landscaping and change things of that nature. And so, why we chose these is that, obviously, with new construction on a vacant lot, it was seen as this is an opportunity, in essence, a blank canvas. And so, an opportunity to meet those requirements. And with any new projects, especially those that come before planning commission, we typically get a preliminary landscape plan as a component of that and can be reviewed associated with it, as well as the fifty percent or more of the existing interior and exterior walls. So, why staff purposefully picked that? Is it actually... That is the threshold associated with quote-unquote "non-conforming" structures and non-conforming uses in terms of a site when it needs to be brought into conformance. So, when you exceed fifty percent of demolition of an existing non-conforming structure, for example, and all the non-conformities need to be brought up into conformance with current code requirements. So, that was the thought process between... About that applicability. Now, in terms of exceptions, there is four exceptions or three exceptions, and then the process in terms of how that would be that staff has tentatively identified. It's when a property owner applicant can show that the privacy would be negatively impacted by removing existing trees that potentially exceed that height limit. Two is when there is evidence that can be provided that the removal of those trees potentially are detrimental to the neighborhood or the community. There's the concept of like, you know, historic trees or... Or the word is escaping me in terms of heritage tree, thank you. So, things of that nature, what are those very mature, prominent trees? And if it's seen as being a negative to remove it, that there is allowed to be exceptions into that. And also, for some of our inland areas, there is the potential that there might be no impacts associated with those... With the existing landscaping. So, it may not be necessary to remove that, and if they can show that, it allows for them to do so. So, and then this would be through... The exception process would be through the Director of Community Development. And then, similar to any type of request, it could... The community development director can always place the item before planning commission if it's seen for the same type of findings due to public interest, so on and so forth. Those items can be brought forward to a more public setting. So, in terms of what staff is looking for this evening, it's staff does recommend taking public comment on this issue. And then, we're looking for commissioner discussion regarding confirmation of the triggers that staff has developed and also any other triggers that staff... That commissioners might see would be appropriate to evaluate and potentially include, as well as any additional exceptions and confirm where staff has landed on that as well. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. And staff, again, recommends taking public comment and then bringing it back to commission for final comments and feedback.
All right, I think we'll... If commissioners agree, then we will proceed with public. Let me recall Joe Jagger.
Good evening, Joe Jacob, Mark Beach. I'm speaking to voice my support for a private view ordinance. I am a homeowner with views, no differently than many residents of Dana Point. My home is my largest investment. And as many homeowners with views, I paid a premium for those views. I am also a licensed Realtor. And to preserve property values in Dana Point, it is important that we ensure that views are protected. In fact, in certain cases, even homeowners without views will benefit from higher comps in neighborhoods that have homes with views. As we all know, our zoning code limits building and fence heights, but does not have limitations on heights of landscaping, which can severely impact views. Since California law does not protect our views, a city private view ordinance is imperative. Without a private view ordinance, homeowners whose views have been impaired have little recourse. Dana Point is blessed with some amazing views. have little recourse. Dana Point is blessed with some amazing views. A private view ordinance will help us protect our property values and our quality of life. Thank you.
The next speaker, Hillary Rover.
Well, I haven't been a dog in a long time, but Roy's good. But that's okay. Hi, thank you for having me. You know, basically, what I was gonna say is pretty much said. There's a couple of different things. I've had over five years on a landscape committee, which may or may not mean anything, but we've had some very big challenges over in one of our communities. I, I think that when you look at standardizing or city palettes, we at NBT did do a palette to standardize. Now, mind you, I get that there are individual wants and needs for different styles and things of that nature. I think the whole point is to, to limit and standardize to our building zones, and the purpose of our building zones, which was to preserve the views. I think the palette you've obviously thought about, so I thought I was gonna bring some news, surprise to me. And we even had different heights for different areas, slope versus, you know, where it's placed, and does it block 180 view, or does it block 150 degree view? So when we go around looking for things that need to be removed or not removed, we look at how much of a view is that blocking? It's kind of important on the placement, like you were saying. So I'm probably not saying anything new. The only other thing is if there were any discrepancies, and somebody wanted to have something changed, but it didn't break the rules, for us, what we did is an adoption program where that private homeowner with permission, the neighbors would pay for the removal or the addition of a tree with permission, get signed off, and they pay for it. They pay for the installation, they pay for the tree, and they pay for even the water at the beginning, so it takes, like water gators. And then they have to sign a, a form, a legal form, that says they have no entitlement. So that is an idea for, for neighbors that have conflict, that don't break your, your ordinances, or whatever ordinance that you do accept, for those possible changes if somebody else wants to pay for it. And that's basically it. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, Derek Madison?
Yes.
Madison.
I basically have the same point of view about our views and our homes, and the value of our homes. I've been in my home for 37 years, and I've had an ocean view that whole time. And I live in a place where there's a view corridor, corridor, and our CCNRs require us to make sure that all of the trees along the view corridor, which is now a public trail between the two properties off Miguel Beach, I mean, Silver Road. Anyway, so, you know, we have to keep our trees, you know, to, at a certain level and trim them a certain way. But what's happened is, I worked on the Planning Commission when they first started the general pla, not on the Planning Commission, but with the general plan, and the general plan shows the way that corridor was supposed to have the tree starting from. And anyway, and what's happened is, all of the trees have grown up because they were not planted where they were supposed to. They were planted up against the fence, so that now they're huge. And they've tried to keep them trimmed, but pine trees don't trim well. You know, we trim ours differently, because we trim them so you can see through, but they're not trimming them well, and they've gotten to the point where you can't, you can't see the view. You know, and I have pictures of what I've had for, since 83, which is an ocean view, you know, with the sunset, and this is the one tonight, where you can see all the trees, you know, are covering it, because they're not trimmed down and they've grown so big. And as I said, I also have the plan of how that particular area was supposed to be built, where it showed that the trees were supposed to be put down in a certain place, not up high where the fences are. Anyway, because our property is, you know, our most valuable asset that we have, and our city is a beautiful city, and some of us are very lucky and fortunate to have that view. And so I just think having some kind of a view ordinance set up in the city would be a, a good thing to think about. I don't know what the Laguna Beach one is, but I know that making sure that we do something in that direction, because we do have those ordinance for the heights of homes and so forth. So I think having something to do with the landscaping and keeping it to a certain point where it can be menial, amenial for everyone to have, you know, their view. Anyway, thank you so much.
Next speaker, Julian Joshua.
Good evening, Commissioners. Julian Joshua, Dana Point, Monarch Beach. I've had to more or less tear up my address, because everything I was gonna say has already been said. So I endorse what Mr. Joe Muller says. He speaks with greater experience than I as a Realtor. But can I briefly say that Dana Point's a city of views? We love our trees, but we also love our views, and just as importantly, we paid a premium for those views, and those views add up to 10% to the value of a property. Now, of course, why do we need a view ordinance? I would say it's because there's no common law right in California to a view. And when I say common law, please consider it in the loose sense. So that's why we need an ordinance. The arguments have been made that an ordinance might increase, might, might increase litigation. I think it's the opposite. The experience of our neighboring cities is that having an ordinance, which is a fair ordinance, actually reduces conflicts and encourages agreement. So what I would ask you to do, excuse me, bear in mind that views and trees are compatible, that a private view ordinance that limits trees to roof heights will assure privacy while protecting views, and also that a specified landscape palette that protects privacy and views and keeps the promise of Dana Point as an exceptional, exceptionally livable city is an objective that you should be aiming for. I congratulate the staff on doing a thorough job on this, and I think they're on the right lines. Thank you.
Next speaker, Ken Torbert.
Thank you very much. My name is Ken Torbert, and I'm President of Monarch Hills Homeowners' Association in Monarch Beach. And I like to support your efforts in working in this direction to have a view ordinance. Our community as condominiums, and some of you know it, it's at Miguel and Camino Avion. And as an example, on the corner closest to the Monarch Resort, the condo went, just went for $895,000, just a, a two-bedroom, small condominium. Its adjacent owner with a peek-a-view view went for $575,000. So I know Julian mentioned that sometimes it's, could be, you know, 10% higher, but a lot of them are actually 30% higher in val, in value. So if that view had been blocked, then both properties probably would have gone for $575,000. I wanted to make that point clear. So it's a very valid, very valid concept. The utilities on the first slide, I don't know if you can bring the first slide up that you had up here, but it, but it showed trees growing close to the utilities. I don't think we can trust the utilities in this day and age. They don't have the funds and resources necessarily to keep up. I think you might have something included in your ordinance to discuss safety and distance from existing lines, so you don't have to wait for a utility company to come along too late to stop, spark a rest or something that might start fire. So I think safety is an important issue. And when I was thinking about safety, I also thought about disease. We have sycamore trees on our property that we are now taking down, tall sycamore trees, and a lot of our owners are really upset that we're taking out what they call legacy trees, you know, heritage trees, these big sycamores. Well, they're so diseased, and it's spreading from one tree to another. And then that gets termite infestations, it also weakens the tree and the tree branches, so that they can fall on buildings. So it's, there's a safety issue. So I think a lot of safety issues should be brought into your discussion. And also just one minor thing is the hedges. One of the things is people keep their hedges eight or 10 feet high. Well, more than eight feet, your landscapers can't get at them, or more than about 10 feet, they don't get at them, and you have to have a tree company come in. Well, if you have one board that says, "We, we're not going to cut this hedge," and another board says they don't want to use the tree service, your, your hedges can get 18 or 20 feet.
Thank you.
When we've had them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now I guess we'll open it up for Commissioner comments. Anybody wanna start?
Actually, I have a couple of questions for staff before we get going here. Just get back to my notes here. So Sean, can you, if I have a house, I wanna add a tree to my front yard, is that protected? What are the rules? Can I just do, can I plant a tree under this? Do I need a permit for that?
If you're just adding simply a tree, no, not unless the threshold is 500 feet of rehab of existing landscaping is what would then trigger a landscape permit. So if this were to be, in essence, approved generally, unless it's drafted, it would have to be one of those other provisions that would be triggered to require the landscape permit, which would then require compliance with this provision, the height provision.
Okay, but do I need a landscape, do I need a permit to plant a tree in my front yard?
Only if you need, only if you are disturbing or doing more than 500 square feet of rehabilitated landscape.
That's what I thought. Okay. Just run through these real quick. The next question. So you answered one, but the, when you get into the exceptions and the exceptions to landscape height limits under number one, so it talks about privacy, but whose privacy are we talking about?
It's, it's purposefully left vague, in essence, is because that's why when you have an exception, that someone's requesting that, right? We have an applicant, we probably have a neighbor that's involved with that, and so there's probably going to be a few people potentially are involved with that decision, and so it would be part of the exception requests, that they would have to indicate, what are, A, first, where is the project, and then B, whose privacy is it? The person that's doing the project, is it the neighbor that might be impacted by removing that? So it's purposely left that it's, hopefully, we wanna encourage neighbors to work together to not impact one another. So that's why we purposely written it that way, to allow for that ability for them to hopefully work together to address the issue.
Because if you have a privacy issue, your tree shouldn't be, a tree exceeding the height of your house won't protect your privacy.
That's true. I think it's more of a situation where we have a hedge or some other shrubs that are more along the, potentially the property lines, and then if you take them down and start over, typically people don't put in mature landscaping. So what could happen is, unless they prune them down and they maintain that, and are going to as part of this process, maintain it and just maintain it at that lower height, starting over may create a visual impact, may create a privacy impact. And so we want to keep it flexible so that way we had options available.
Okay. And then do we have any rules around hedge, side, let's start with side yards? Can I have a wall of hedges that exceed the, the height limit of the fence?
It would be six feet is the limitation, or unless it's from the, there's a provision that allows to go up to eight feet under a certain circumstances. But beyond that, it would be the same as any other fence with a minor site development permit.
But if they exceed that, there's a code enforcement issue?
Yeah, or they can request a minor site development permit to exceed that.
And then you go to the next one. So what are, what would, what would be the standard under this exception number two, where the, when a property owner or an applicant could provide evidence that removal of a mature tree, shrub, or hedge would be a detriment to the neighborhood or community? That's, what is that?
Well, again, we're trying to think about this citywide when we write this, and it's not just one particular area. And we have some, some lots that are developed and some lots that are undeveloped, that have some substantial beautiful trees that provide a light, a lot to the, in essence, urban environment, the, the landscaped urban environment. And so with some of those more mature trees, which are difficult to get to, and especially if they're healthy, it may not be something that, that would be in the best interest in removing an iconic tree or a, a neighborhood, you know, attribute, if you will. And so it would give us an opportunity to, when we evaluate, if something triggers the need for a landscape permit, that would then bring it in, requiring to bring it into conformance if there were these mature specimen trees in the neighborhood, it would give us an opportunity to evaluate, you know, the benefit of potentially keeping that and assess that, and taking on a case-by-case basis in terms of what is the condition, what is it, make sure it's healthy, and, and how, what does it add to that, add to that neighborhood? So it, again, it allows us flexibility in terms of evaluating and making sure that not all of our mature trees are just being clear-cut with any new development, that we at least have an opportunity to evaluate the, the benefits of keeping that mature tree stock.
Okay. But all I gotta do is show that it's gonna impact somebody or something, and I meet that test, I would argue. So I guess my concern would be that it's so vague that it just creates an avenue for, if, if, if we were to move forward, I would think we'd wanna make, make this a little bit more definitive, and, but I'll keep my comments to myself for a second here. And when it says no views will be negatively impact, again, who's, what views are we talking about? Because views are perspective, it depends on where you're at, what level, if you're at a house that's five, you know, streets over and it's 20 or 30 feet higher, that view is different than the guy right next door, it's different than the house across the street. We're not qualifying what views are here, just that views, we're not specifying what those views are. So would this be a view of a canyon as well?
So I think that's an excellent point, and I think that that is about identifying what views are. I think a view of a canyon could, yes, be a view. And so, again, I agree that perhaps then that's some additional information that we need to add, and that was good feedback for us.
Yeah, I've, I've got probably a list I can give you two of thoughts I have, but wanna just make sure I answer these questions. On the next page, it doesn't apply to historic sites. So these would be houses that are Mills Act houses, for instance. If they wanted to do landscaping, they could do landscaping that exceeded the neighborhood height, or the, the zoning height limit, that...
And what are you referring to with that?
The next page, it says this chapter does not apply to. So this is in ref, this is in, next page, section C, lowercase c, this chapter does not apply to registered local, state, federal, historic sites. This would then not apply to a Mills Act.
So again, this would be more as, if there was a component of what made that site historic, a lot of times, it's not only a historic building, for example, a lot of times, a lot of the components are, there is such a thing as historic landscaping, the way in which the site is sited, in terms of how it's, it's, it's juxtaposition with the street and on its site, and so what that has to do with that, if it's a, associated with what makes that the character-defining feature of making one of those historic structures or Mills Act structures historic, obviously that would not be, we would not wanna see that, because removing that would potentially be an impact to the historic resource, and potentially could require an EIR to remove that tree. So that would be the thought process behind that, is why it would not be applicable. But if it's not a quote-unquote "a character-defining feature," is the potential that landscaping requirements... that landscaping requirements to the rest of the site would need to be, but yes.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Right, thank you.
So Sean, I, I concur with Eric's comments on detriment, the definition of detriment. But then going two pages over, there's a new paragraph F, landscape height limitations. Talking about projects requesting prescriptive compliance, what is prescriptive compliance?
So there's a provision built into our landscape requirements. And I believe it's something that came, has come down to us from the state. And it allows for, um, based on a certain square footage of landscaping and, and the plants and the wa, and the water usage to be, uh, to be utilized. There are certain standards that are very straightforward. So instead of going through the extensive process of developing and going through a full formal review of landscape plans, which is extensive and oftentimes does revolve, involve our third party plan checker. Because as I've said in the past, no one wants me really looking at those things because I kill every landscape in my house. And so it, it provides for more straight, streamlined review of those types of, of projects. But still, even with compliance through the prescriptive, um, prescriptive process, uh, they would still need to comply because it is a landscape permit.
All right. And then also, um, in that paragraph, it talks about, um, the height related to the applicable zoning district. So is there something that we currently have or is this something new to be created?
So it'd be what we currently have as, as the commission knows that, um, we do have a number of different zoning districts that have a number of different height requirements. For example, in our RSF seven zoning district, which is, you would say is our standard kind of most utilized, uh, single family residential zoning district in our community. Uh, RSF seven allows for up to a 28 foot height limitation for the structure with a 612 roof pitch. So in that sense, being that 28 feet is the maximum height a structure could go up to, landscape, trees, shrubs and, and hedges with a correct approvals uh, could potentially go up to 28 feet. But they would have to show as part of their landscape permit how whatever that landscape pallet is at mature height will not exceed that 28 foot limitation.
Yeah, that one. Of course, as we look at this, and I know you guys have done a great job. This is a case by case analysis. I mean, when we look at trees and we look at hedges and we look at, at, and I know we have to have, we have to have some, some way of analyzing this in place. But it, it just seems that everyone looking at these is going to be a subjec, subjective look. Such as if somebody, an owner of a home lives on a corner and they're on a street that they can look down the street and they can see the ocean down the street, even though it's a cross coast highway. What is the trigger? I mean, if, if, if somebody can see a little tiny bit of that blue and then the neighbor comes over and says, oh no, you know, you, 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 you're in, you're in that ground here. Who makes these decisions?
So, um, as directed, not as directed, but as the conversation went on July 8th, we discussed and staff presented a number of approaches, as I said, reactive versus proactive. A reactive approach would be more complaint driven. You know, I had a view, my view is now gone. Uh, and, uh, an example that would be the Laguna Beach process where there's a, a three step phase process to evaluate and go through and potentially address those types of issues. Based on public comment at that meeting as well as the discussion of the planning commission, there was concerns regarding taking a reactive approach and that proactive was seen as a, a better approach if landscape requirements were going to go in this direction and to be developed. Uh, and so based on that, as long as you were compliant with this code, meaning that you triggered something, a landscape permit that required compliance with this height limit is shown here with the, as, uh, with the compliance, the maximum height of the zoning district. And that pallet is planted and, and is certified that it's done in compliance with that approved landscape plan, there is in essence, no recourse. It's a part of the approved landscape plan. And in fact, that's similar in talking with Laguna Beach staff. If you have a project and that they evaluate the landscaping and the maximum height of the landscaping associated with the project and that landscape plan is approved, which includes a table that addresses these heights, which is actually where I, I took this in terms of drafting this, that concept. Then they can't in essence re, reactively complain about that because it's in compliance. So again, trying to be proactive in our approach and trying to address potential concerns. And again, as we talked about, it's consistent with that envelope, right? Is that structures could already be in that envelope in terms of that height. And so that's why staff again utilizing that, it kind of keeps it in that development envelope that we already have in place and it just would apply it to landscaping. But there is no reactive approach where someone can complain that that's grown, even though that tree's at 26 feet and you've now impacted my view. There is no provision that requires them to do that. Now, obviously, we always encourage, especially when people come to us at the counter or reach out to us, we always encourage trying to be good neighbors and work together and so on and so forth. But there is no, would be no reactive course. It would just again, be proactive to make sure that we're looking at these issues and trying to identify maximum heights and placement, uh, early on in the planning process.
Thank you.
Sean, um, the, the issue is, uh, I think the speakers tonight talked about ocean views. And I think probably 25 to 30% is a reasonable number to say what an ocean view is worth. On the other hand, there's primary views and there's secondary views. There's views of city lights, there's views of the mountains, there's views of fireworks on 4th of July. And in, in homeowner associations, uh, there's no end to the conflict that, that view issues create. And someone that has no ocean view and has a large pine tree, uh, which are not trimmable, um, there's tremendous emotion, uh, connected to, uh, saving. Uh, I don't have a view, but I have a pine tree. And the people that have, uh, views that are being eliminated by pine trees, you, you've set yourself up for tremendous conflict. And one of the provisions that, uh, that is an ongoing process is there has to be some, um, trigger that says, is it reasonable or unreasonable? And if you don't have someone making that decision, then what I think is reasonable and what you think is reasonable are going to be two different things depending on where, where you're coming from. So, um, in a horizon and there's one large tree that's obviously higher than the roof lines, someone says that's an unreasonable view blockage. If you look at 180 degrees and you see one small tree that's higher, uh, you, you can also have someone that says that's not unreasonable. So in some communities, you're going to have no palm trees. So we're a beach community with no palm trees. So I think when each of these, um, issues of saying they can show the privacy would be negatively affected, there's going to be somebody that says it is and someone that says that it isn't. The next one, the can provide evidence that removal will, will be detrimental. That, that's again, going to be two different opinions. And so one of the things that, um, if it exceeds the height of a building, is that a peripheral view, a side view, an ocean view? Um, and is that because a side view does not have a 25 to 30% premium usually attached to it. It may have some value, but I think what, what we're looking at is how do we, how are we going to protect, uh, property values? Uh, and also legally, how do we go back and say we're, we're gonna go back and say this is a violation when it was never a violation before? So I think the, the fact that we're saying proactively, we have to put something in place that goes forward because we can't, we can't go backward. So the complaint process, um, some guidelines have to be established for how do you, how do you decide? Is, is the word reasonable part of our process or is it just that height? Plus the enforcement, when you plant something and it's supposed to be a certain height, plants don't always know that. So sometimes you're going to have a compliance issue. Again, where you're going to have somebody with a, with a, a plant that wants to be protected versus someone that has a view. So, um, I, I, I look at this and say, um, what happens after installation? Um, what, what are the requirements that the city is going to put on the, uh, the director of planning and the planning commission? Because having 20 years' experience of dealing with view issues, I, I could write a book on the problems. And also because of the benefits that go with it, that's why, uh, the homeowners associations have spent a lot of time and energy and effort. And when you buy in, you know, that's part of the deal. And, and even though you have, um, that's still a major problem. And all the litigation that happens in communities have to do, uh, and so although one speaker said he thought that would be less litigation, um, I, I don't share that opinion uh, because I, I've had experience with, with views where litigation is, view, view litigation is all the litigation, uh, or 95% of it. So, um, anyways, that's, that's my comments. Any other comments?
I have a list of comments. I was just addressing questions before, so I'll jump right in here. And I know that you're trying to address what appears to be a view issue, but we're, these are landscape requirements. And I, I'm struggling with the idea that we're having a discussion about a view ordinance because I, that's not how this was presented, at least in the staff report, it's, um, landscape requirements. Uh, but let me go back. So I'm looking, you know, I looked at, I looked at this with an open mind and also with, um, a lot of experience with landscaping and trees and development and the complexity of, of all those things. And, um, you know, I think the idea that we can limit heights of trees to the various zoning districts is unrealistic. And I think it's a, it, it, there's a potential for a really big un, sort of the, um, the conflicts that come out of something that we haven't thought all the way through. I think as human beings, we're pretty good at coming up with really good ideas. And we're not really good at thinking about how those good ideas may have negative impacts. So, you know, you think about it from a different perspective. If I have a house with a ocean view that's 45 degree angle across my neighbor's front yard and my neighbor decides to grow a tree with a canopy, that, and they have to stop that canopy at 24 feet, that canopy is going to be in direct view of my, is now going to be in the way of my view. That if it actually was allowed to grow, uh, that canopy would grow taller than the house. That tree trunk would be taller than, and outside of my view, and that would be my only obstruction. So that we're going to limit the height of these trees, we're just going to compress the canopies. Uh, this is just one, one potential outcome. So that a view that I have today, uh, could be blocked because my neighbor can't actually grow a tree to its full size. And that's just one potential issue. My bigger concern or part of my concern is just how we get to enough trees that we can even use. So if you just go and look at the California native trees that could grow beyond the, um, heights within this town, which are pretty limited. I think 45 feet is their tallest height, if I'm not mistaken, or something pretty close to that. So it's 45 feet and down. There's 55 trees in the state that are native California trees. And then only 32 of those you can even find that are, that you could actually go purchase them. And of those, 15 are low or moderate water requirements. The rest are have a, an insane amount of water requirements. So I think if we're going to start to look at limiting what we can plant, we have to do that in a manner that looks at the capacity of that limitation and whether or not it's even doable. You know, tree canopies are important. And, you know, if you think about it from a commercial property owner's perspective, a lower tree canopy means it's harder for people driving by in their cars to see the tenants. Um, and I know that may be good or bad depending on who you ask. But to the retail tenant and the retail property owner, having a view of their sign band is a critical part of their success. And it's one way we keep the signs out on the street down to a limit. But if we start to limit the canopies within these shopping centers to be at the height potentially of the sign band, because the height limit is relatively low, we're going to potentially create a problem for those property owners. So for them, trees are not critical. Uh, but I would argue that we do want trees in those parking lots that create shade and make it more pleasant for those of us who walk, uh, within those parking lots. If we don't have a hedge requirement or an obstruction, I think we should make sure we have that. And I actually believe we should do that across the board, whether it's in a setback or not. But I think there's a way to do it that isn't, uh, this sort of physical, where you're taking a hatchet instead of using a scalpel. And I think that this could be a problem. You know, when I, when I drive around the city, when I think about even Christmas and then the trees, what, what's the chance that we lose the candy cane palm trees? Because those would not be permitted going forward if that, um, if, uh, any of those properties redeveloped and had to get a landscape plan, those trees are gone. And I think that's a really unique part of this city, uh, whether it's those trees driving up, um, to City Hall today, there's a tree and I, I don't know exactly what intersection is, but it's coming up Silva and it is a massive tree and it is beautiful. And the thought that we would have to tear that down if somebody wanted to just remodel their house, I don't know that would be good for anybody. And I know we've got some provisions in here. But, you know, property owners are, are not only fickle, but they're inexperienced, they're not developers. Um, so they're not going to know how to take advantage of, and that's probably the wrong word, but they utilize the exceptions that are built into a program that could be beneficial. They're just going to cut the tree down, uh, because they want to remodel their house. You know, I don't want to live in a city necessarily that's, that's all rooftops. I actually like to see trees, uh, up, up above the, the roof lines. Not in a way that's, um, overly aggressive, but I think becoming homogenized with a limited amount of species, because that's what we're going to end up doing is limiting the trees we can actually have here, is going to have somewhat of a de-incentive for those that have trees and shade on their property to actually do anything. And so we're maybe creating a de-incentive while incentivizing or protecting property values that don't need protection. And this is a city that has, you know, in Orange County, some of the most expensive real estate without a view ordinance. So then in that in itself, what I would argue, we don't need, um, an aggressive view ordinance to protect something that's already doing fine. You know, we're, we're looking at shade over private views. So what's more important shaded sidewalks and parkways or, um, protected private views? Depends on who you ask. You know, if you think about it from a different perspective, uh, my, my lot is a 4,000 foot lot. When you take the driveway and then you take the building, you take the setbacks, there's a very limited amount of space to plant a tree. And now I've got to potentially plant a tree or multiple trees just to get enough shade in my yard because I can't plant a tree that can grow full height. Um, and I think that again, we have to think through. You know, trees in my mind are more shared, views aren't. So we're talking about whether we should, something that we all get to participate in and be part of or these protected private views. I don't think we have any requirements within our coastal view on trees, do we?
Off, off top, I can't speak to that.
So if you can, next time you bring that back, I'd love to know what those are. I know we can't put buildings in there, uh, but I believe they're planted. Proximity is critical and I think that's the next one is if I'm 1,000 feet away, a tree that's at, uh, one height is different than if I'm 500 feet away, if I'm a next door neighbor. And I don't know how we address proximity in relationship to views and whose views are actually protected if we're going to, um, put something forward like this. Uh, but I would certainly not be supportive of anything that limits that tree height to just building height. I think that's just, it's a recipe for disaster. I think that's just, it's a recipe for disaster. And I think, you know, from a privacy perspective, my experience has always been it's a two-way street, if I can see you, you can see me. And that usually gets rectified pretty quickly with, you know, trees and blinds and shades and shutters and all those other things that we all have in our homes. But I'd reiterate, I, I don't think property values in this city need protection. And if our goal here is that, I think we're miss, it's misguided. If our goal here is to put together an ordinance that is reasonable and addresses some of the big overarching concerns, I'm supportive of something that makes sense, but I think we have to be really cautious and move in a manner that addresses the unintended consequences of such an ordinance, so that we don't end up, you know, five, 10 years from now asking ourselves, how did we get here? And then have to somehow figure out a way to unwind something that is now a right, which is a view preservation right. And that's something that I don't think, that was not, that's not what this is, but I could see how it could slowly work its way into a preservation process. Those are my overarching comments, but I'd love to, you know, even if we wanna put a task force together, I'd be happy to support something where we try to come up with a reasonable approach to this. But I don't think the way it's set up now is, it's not that it's unreasonable, I just don't know that it's workable at this point. There's not enough in here to actually work on. And I would just add one more point, you know, Laguna Beach, I don't know what that's costing them, but if, if we're gonna reference those ordinances, see if we can have a discussion with those cities and talk to them about what it's costing them, what it's costing their residents and make sure that we're not moving down a road that actually adds another layer of cost to the city that's again, another unintended process, unintended consequence. So, thank you.
Sean, I have one other comment. I think we, when I first got this, I thought we were talking landscaping and water usage and it sort of evolved into a view ordinance and that's not what it was titled. So I, I think we need to clarify when we're going forward, what, what are we giving our opinion on? Are we talking about a landscape process? Are we talking a view preservation process? Because that's, that's two, two different things and, and the plants certainly have an implication, but it's not a view ordinance per se, because buildings have impacts on view ordinances also. So it's, it's only a part. We have no other points? If we do have any other points, we'll hear that. Otherwise, I will call for...
So just to, what I was gonna say is thank you, everyone, for that feedback. It was extremely helpful. And just so you know, next steps is that we're gonna take all this feedback, we're gonna evaluate, assess how we should potentially move forward and what can be done. And then ultimately, a formal, a formal record, a formal draft language will be brought back to planning commission once we start the six week public review process for a recommendation to city council regarding changes for the 2019 zoning ordinance update. So I just wanted to let you know, that will be the next step after tonight.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Old business, we have no old business. New business, no new business, no staff report, staff report? Thank you, Kelly.
Come on, girl.
And commissioner comments? So, Paul? Meetings adjourned. We'll reconvene on Monday, the 25th, next week.
Yes.
It's been so much fun, we'll do it again.